Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's October 4th, 2012 meeting. And if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I note for all that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the NCP website. We do have a quorum, and so without objection, we'll proceed with the agenda as has been advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the Chairman, and I have two items. One is, we received a letter from Representative Darrell Issa, Chairman of the House Committee on Oversight and Government Reform, designating John Quaderas as the first alternate, Howie Dennis as the second alternate, and Mary Pritz Chau as the third alternate to the commission. Howie has previously served as the third, now he's number two. Second item on the Chairman's report is that yesterday we had our third annual meeting at the Pentagon with DOD, specifically with the Army, Navy, and Air Force commands in the Washington District. Commissioner Proventia, who is the DOD rep, has been instrumental in setting up these meetings as we continue to work to further collaboration between NCPC staff and DOD staff on project planning. Of the 158 projects we have reviewed in FY12, forty-one of them were DOD, so that's roughly a quarter, with GSA being number two, with 29 of the 158 projects. So, the military-related projects make up a healthy chunk of our work. We stress kind of three things. One is getting NCPC staff involved as early as possible in project planning, certainly well before preparing project budgets and doing appropriations requests. The earlier we are involved, the better those budgets and appropriations requests, the more accurate they can be. Second, we stressed having up-to-date master plans. The Navy Yard, Joint Base Bowling and Acostia, and Fort Belvoir being three of a number that we are still seeking, and progress is being made on those. And then, third, we cited the need to try to have what's been described as staying power to those master plans, so that as installation commands change, the master plans don't continue to be changed as well. So, when a master plan is prepared, we would like to work with them to see how it can survive installation command changes. So, the meeting was very good. Everyone understood and certainly agreed with the importance of master plans and how they can help speed up individual projects. So, it was a very good meeting. Mr. Acosta and Shane Detman, a senior planner, and I were the three from here who attended. And again, I want to acknowledge Mr. Proventia's role in these meetings, been very helpful. That ends the Chairman's report. Any questions? Third item on the agenda is legislative update from Ms. Skyler. I'm sorry, excuse me. Second item on the agenda is the Executive Director's report, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I just have a few items that I'd like to report on. First of all, at your desk is a postcard announcing our federal urban design element open house. This open house will be held on Wednesday, November 14th, at the District Architecture Center on Seventh Street. So, we encourage all of you to attend if you are able to. I'd also like to make a few new introductions to our agency. I'd like to introduce Darrell Bush.
Darrell, will you please stand?
Darrell joined the Urban Design and Plan Review Division as a community planner. Ms. Bush received dual masters in city and regional planning and architecture from the Georgia Institute of Technology. Prior to joining NCPC, Ms. Bush served as principal planning technician at the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. I'd also like to introduce Maureen Ty. Maureen joined the Physical Planning Division as a community planner. Ms. Ty received dual masters, again, from city and regional planning and architecture from Georgia Tech, so that makes two. Ms. Ty was a designer at Arc Plant, Inc. before joining NCPC. We'd like to welcome them to the agency. Also, I'd like to announce that after 41-plus years of federal service, including more than eight years at NCPC, Phyllis Bessel, our human resources officer, retired yesterday. Phyllis consistently provided the highest level of service to the staff in managing the agency's human resources function. She was a great HR officer, and we'll certainly miss her very pleasant demeanor and her very professional attitude at this agency. We wish her the best in her retirement. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to second Phyllis's, that we will miss her. She has been a veteran here, and she's been very good. Well-deserved retirement. Third item on the agenda is the legislative update, Ms. Skyler.
I have one item to report. There on late September, in both the House and the Senate, a new bill pertaining to the National Women's History Museum was introduced, both the House and the Senate. The versions in both houses are identical. The idea behind the bill is to create a commission to study the establishment of a museum and report back to Congress and the President.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Skyler? The fourth item on the agenda is the consent calendar, and we have two items. First is item 4A, is the yards, the southeast Federal Center parcel in. And item 4B is the transfer of jurisdiction of a triangular portion of land bordered by Constitution Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue Northwest, and the National Gallery of Art West Building. Any questions on either of those two items? Hearing known is there a motion on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar being passed, say aye. Opposed, no. Calendar is adopted. Fifth item on the agenda, item 5A, the fifth item on the agenda, 5A, is amendments to the federal environment element of the comprehensive plan. We have Mr. Zaden. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. The first agenda item in the open session is the final policy adoption for the update to the federal environment element. As many of you are aware, we are working through the existing comprehensive plan to update the elements and to evaluate the policies that they contain. And just to kind of give you a quick status of where we are, these are all starting to kind of come to a head. So, the transportation element was, the final policy adoption was complete in June through this commission's action. The environment element is before you today. Next month, at the November commission meeting, we will be bringing the draft urban design element to you. This is a brand-new element for the comprehensive plan, and we've been working with the Urban Design Task Force to create that element. So, that will be coming to you for draft release, and there will also be a public event held on November 14th for that element, as our executive director mentioned. Concurrent with the release of that element, we will also be requesting the release of the update to the historic preservation element. Because there's such a significant overlap between the preservation and parts of the urban design element, we thought it would be good to release those drafts concurrently. They are still separate elements, but go through the public process at the same time. And then, beyond that, we are working on the visitors and formations elements, and we are targeting in December for their draft presentation. We are working to finalize the workplace element, and we are also targeting December for the finaling of that piece. And then, the final element to be updated will be the open space and parks element, and we'll begin updating that in 2013. So, lots forthcoming are related to the comprehensive plan. Today's agenda item is the federal environment element. This element was last updated in 2004, and it provides policy recommendations on best management practices and goals for environmental stewardship for federal agencies throughout the national capital region. Like all the rest of the elements in the comprehensive plan, it has specific policy recommendations as well as aspirational statements. And also, many of the policies also overlap with other elements of the comprehensive plan, particularly in this case, the transportation element and some of the recommendations we have for the urban design work. But since 2004, there has been some advancement and some work done throughout the federal government as regards to environmental stewardship, and this is what we wanted to account for in our update. In 2007, the Energy Independence and Security Act was signed, which provide very strict regulations regarding energy conservation and building design for the federal government. This was followed by Executive Order 13514, which we all know as the Sustainability Executive Order, which built upon the 2007 law to really provide stricter and stronger policy guidance to federal agencies in managing their environmental impacts. Also, the Chesapeake Bay and Anacostia River programs have been initiated. There's a strong Chesapeake Bay program that was embodied in an executive order. The district's been working very hard on cleaning up and revitalizing the Anacostia River. We wanted to reflect that work as well. Also, climate change has become a very substantial issue. Work from the Environmental Protection Agency and the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments has really provided some strong policy direction on the realm of climate change, and we wanted to reflect that in this update, as well as advances in scientific research and new best practices for environmental impacts. Stemming from the Sustainability Executive Order, every federal agency has to publish a strategic sustainability performance plan. And as an informational piece, we wanted to reflect NCPC's in the environment element. And some of the policy points in our strategic plan include updating and expanding the federal elements of the comprehensive plan, which we're working on, working closely with the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments in advancing the Greater Washington 2050. We feel like this is part of our sustainability work. Developing a precinct-scale eco-district plan for 10th Street and Maryland Avenue Southwest, this we're pursuing in the eco-district project, which you're aware of. And also implementing operational standards to help reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And kind of an interesting bragging point, I guess, currently over 95% of NCPC employees walk, bike, or take public transportation to work. So, we're doing pretty well in that realm, and we wanted to reflect this in the environment element. So, getting to the policies themselves, there are 12 existing policy areas, ranging from air quality to soils and vegetation to radio frequency or telecommunications antennas. We went through and evaluated these areas to just update the policies and see if they're consistent with current best practices. We are proposing three new policy areas, one being climate change, two being light pollution, and three being energy conservation. The entire update is included in your EDR, and I'm just going to highlight some of the updates and then pay particular attention to these three new policy areas. To the existing areas, particularly floodplains, wetlands, and watersheds, soil, and wildlife, we built on the current approach in the environment element, which is to avoid impacts, protect these resources, and mitigate any impacts that may happen. There is an environmental justice section of this element that provides policy guidance to federal agencies, and this section provides policies which require open evaluation of alternatives and really reinforce what is required in the National Environmental Policy Act as regards to public participation. We did strengthen the policies in the vegetation section, which we're now calling vegetation and tree canopy. The district has a very strong tree canopy. The District of Columbia's tree canopy increased 2.1% since 2006, with a now coverage of 37.2%. And the district has a goal of 40% by 2035, so obviously coming very, very close to meeting that goal within that timeframe. The update to the policies include a stronger focus on preserving and expanding the tree canopy regionally, replace trees and compensate for tree canopy loss. We do recommend a one-to-one replacement for most trees in federal projects. And also respecting local standards and guidelines for tree protection. Many of the local communities around the national capital region are really focusing their zoning codes and their regulations on preserving trees, and we think the federal government should strive to meet some of these regulations. A new section that we've added is climate change, and the element does reflect the EPA's definition of climate change, which is, and I'll just read part of this, but "climate change refers to any significant change in the measures of climate lasting for an extended period of time." We did want to build upon the EPA's work regarding climate change. Climate change really impacts, covers a lot of realms, so these policies overlap with other pieces of the comp plan as well as within the environment element itself. But the policies focus on long-range planning for flooding, runoff, and soil erosion and temperature extremes. It encourages sustainable building design. It does set a zero net energy standard by 2030, and this is something that comes out of the 2007 ESA law. It encourages district-level energy planning, which is something we've seen in the eco-district and other projects. And it supports continued analysis of the impacts of climate change on the national capital region. So, it sets a foundation for establishing partnerships to study the impacts of climate change. Another new policy area is light pollution. In updating the environment element and studying this issue, we looked at some scientific research on how light pollution can disrupt migratory patterns. It weakens the cleansing of particulate matter in the atmosphere, and basically it can also waste energy when you're using lighting that is unnecessary. So, the new policies look to eliminate upward and horizontal spillage of light, provide appropriate light controls, and respect the effects and impact of light on adjacent areas and surrounding context. This is also something that we've gotten into in the urban design element. So, it just really sets some standards for managing lighting use for federal agencies. The final new area is evolving energy conservation, and we really wanted to reflect many of the standards set in the 2007 Energy Independence and Security Act, or ESA. And the new policies look to reduce fossil fuel-generated energy consumption by 55%. 30% of hot water in federal buildings should come from solar energy, and again, reiterates the need to encourage district light-level energy planning to pool resources and conserve In terms of process, we have held a public comment period, which ran from June 11th after the commission released the draft element. That comment period ran from June to August, and we did receive some comments, and those were reflected in your EDR. A public meeting was held on June 27th so that we could present the draft update. The policies were tweaked after the comment period was closed. A draft narrative has been added and will continue to be edited as the comp plan is compiled, and this is kind of the process that we're going through in updating the entire comp plan, is to keep working on the narrative before it's all finalized, at which time we'll bring it back to the commission for a full adoption. So, the commission action requested is that the commission adopt the updated policies to the federal environment element, but hold those policies in abeyance until all of the federal elements of the comprehensive plan are adopted and the comp plan can be compiled, which, again, at which time we'll bring back to you for a final adoption of the entire document. So, that's the end of my presentation, and I believe we do have one person sign up to speak.
We do indeed. We have one person sign up to speak, Mr. Linsley Williams. Mr. Williams, welcome. As you're representing yourself, you have three minutes.
Members of the commission, my name is Linsley Williams. Sometimes I'm in trouble. And I'm here to actually support the adoption that's been recommended, holding things in abeyance, but to bring to your attention three things that came to my attention as I reviewed the document over the weekend. I had two oh-my moments and one bingo moment. And the two oh-my moments relate to the statement of the goal, which I found incredibly uninspiring. And I took a crack at trying to give you some words. I don't want you to take what I've written as, take it or leave it, but to just sort of put it before you that these are things that need attention. And the goal, it seems to me, is one of those areas that needs attention. The second area that needs attention, thinking particularly of the DC contribution to the effort in the Southwest Eco-District, is to get it more fully recognized, and that will be coming up to you for adoption, I believe, January. So, I think it all fits with the timeline that David identified to you in the slides. And the final thing, which was my sort of bingo moment, was the realization that as we all struggle to meet the requirements of the stormwater management system, management requirements that are on us because of EPA and because of the problem that they're trying to address, we need to see if there's a way to figure out ways of accessing what I call for the moment, if not having a better term, unessential, that's not surplus, unessential federal lands, so that they could be multipurposed into solving environmental problems, particularly those relating to stormwater, as well as getting on with their primary purpose of whatever the installation is in question, and at the same time, not getting, not causing security issues. And that's what the gist of my letter is all about. I don't want to try to read the letter, and you also have a supplemental letter, I believe, from David Tuckman, who was explaining perhaps in a little more detail than I did what this is all about. I think that what David has recommended, David Zaden has recommended, the executive director's recommended, is hold these things, modify them as the plans are developed. And I see all three of these things as being something that are potentially amenable to be included, and would ask you to sort of nudge staff in that direction, but basically go forward with the adoption that's before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, very much. Do you want to have any comments or questions for Mr. Williams? We will, Peter, I'm sorry.
I don't know if this is on, did I?
Yeah, press the button to your...
What's that one? Got it. Still getting used to the new microphones. I just, I wanted to understand better from you what you regard as unessential land.
I'm not proud of that word, Mr. May. But what I was trying to do is to make sure I did not use the word surplus, because that sets off all kinds of alarm bells, and it makes it sound like it's not needed. But I'm thinking of a range of things that could occur to both give value and solve problems. There are perimeter issues, places that involve a buffer strip. Thirty years ago, I was involved with an effort to find a solution to a chiller plant that Metro wanted to put into the middle of a residential community of Woodley Park. We found a solution for that by putting it in the buffer, by suggesting, and then getting approvals for putting it into the buffer strip of the National Zoological Park. Mr. May has brought before you some ideas about trying to figure out what we can do to get better grass to grow on the mall. And right now, the mall, particularly the western part of the mall, is sitting on muck, which was dredged up, and it's not very good at absorbing water. And it's the kind of thing which, if it were repurposed so that it had a really good kind of preparation for it, it could probably become a receiving zone for water and not cause the runoffs that we're experiencing. Well, that's valuable to people that have to meet this EPA requirement, and it's not essential if you can get under it and use it and still have the green surface for the people of America to walk on. And I look at installations of the Defense Department, which have considerable acreage, and I'm presuming that there are locations within that which might be wetlands or could be made to better hold back water from cascading down the Anacostia or down Rock Creek. There's an outfall on the upper end of Rock Creek Park, which is getting scoured a lot. There may be things that can be done with that, and all I'm trying to do is say, let's see if there's a way in which federal lands and stewards of those lands can partner with those that have problems that need to be solved and have two problems solved at once instead of just one set of requirements that is imposed, which can sometimes prove to be really nettlesome in the development world. That's what I had in mind.
Okay, yeah, I guess you need to work on what the right word is, but...
We do.
Because of the, you know, what you've talked about that might occur on parkland are certainly uses that we are looking at on a regular basis, but we would never want to characterize that land as unessential.
No, and I wouldn't want you to either.
Right, so, okay. I'm also, I would be concerned if there was a mandate to do those things for other agencies. We're doing it now on a voluntary basis, and we see the value in it, and we want to do anything we can to help our federal partners when we can. And we've had some discussions about taking on extra water, for example, in certain areas.
Well, I hope the members of the commission saw that what I was trying to suggest was not a mandate, but basically a right to knock on the door and say, "May we?"
Right.
That's what I wanted to see if we could get it more formally expressed, so that as opportunities and constraints come along, that there's something in writing that says, "This is a good thing to try."
I think that you can be encouraged by the fact that a lot of those conversations are already happening, driven by a number of causes. I mean, our biggest cause might be the idea of eliminating the Potomac Tunnel that's part of the long-term control plan now known as the Clean Rivers Project, which would have tremendous and devastating impacts on portions of Rock Creek and CNO Canal Park if it's built the way it's conceived right now. Thanks.
I think this is a really intriguing idea, and I think the concept that you might be trying to convey is that whatever the primary purpose of the federal land might be, that it might also be able to serve that primary purpose and serve additional purposes that have an environmental benefit. And I think that that really is, you know, is an important concept to sort of put out there. 20% of the land in the city is parkland, most of that is federal. 20% of the land is roads and alleys and driveways. We're looking, as a city, at repurposing our streets, our rights-of-way, to see, could they do more to benefit the environment, including actually managing and storing stormwater? So, I think it would be an important contribution to look at all the lands that are available in the city to see if we could put them to additional purposes that might be mutually beneficial, and I think it's a great suggestion.
If I might just add, first of all, I wish I'd had you as a co-author. But second, I did not restrict my remarks to district-located federal lands. It seems to me that if we can do this, and we're trying to do a policy element for the region, and if there's a solution that can be had up the Anacostia, and if it's in Prince George's County but still on federal land, and it helps meet the problems of the, helps address the problems of the Anacostia as well as a development site in the district, I don't see that it should be off limits.
My honor? My honor. I missed the training session for that last month. Good afternoon. Linsley, I think those are, all three of your suggestions are worthy of consideration, and I would add my voice to yours and others to nudge the staff to maybe incorporate them somehow. But my question is, did you offer these comments previously during the public comment period?
No. I have to confess that that's why I identified myself as trouble, that I did not see these things until I did a final read over the weekend. And the other factor that came to mind, particularly as to the third item of this multipurposing or whatever, I've just become increasingly aware of the difficulty being faced by the pending stormwater regulations. And so, there was, to use another aquatic term, a confluence of factors that led me to do this, and I saw the opportunity to make these comments, which is a public session, but more particularly, the nature of the process of being recommended by your director is to hold all of these things in abeyance, and I said, "There's the window of opportunity. I can make comments and not derail the train."
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate for, I guess, commission action's final adoption, should we put a motion out that might be amended?
Yeah, I was, I was... I was actually going to ask if the action is for final adoption, but we're holding it in abeyance, what position does that put us in to consider some arguably minor but important changes?
You could either make the amendments right now, or, as Mr. Zaden also mentioned, you will be seeing the final plan when it's all complete, and then you'll be adopting that. We could also point out where we had made the changes in that document in the future. So, you could do either.
So, there's still time, even if we...
Yeah, there's still time to change it, because we're going to, as David noted, we're going to change some of the narrative. Also, there may be other things we find, so you'll have another shot at making corrections. But if you want us to do it, you could also make the...
Yeah, instead of us trying to make changes on the fly, why don't we, I think, staff has got the sense of the commission that we're more than mildly interested in Mr. Williams' suggestions. Perhaps we give some considered thought to it and work with Mr. Williams as well and maybe bring back amendments later. Is that, okay? Mr. Gunning, is that all right?
I'm just looking at the language of the commission action, which is final adoption of the updated policies, so I'm just trying to figure out...
Yeah, that was, that was a point of my question as well.
We call it interim adoption?
Yeah, what posture does that put us in?
Well, when we bring the full document back for final adoption and to put it into effect, we can, as part of that commission action, point out any changes to the policies that may have occurred from the previous adoption, if that makes sense.
Can we just call it adoption and not final adoption? Can I make that amendment once we've got the motion?
Yeah, I mean, we'll make this a point of the EDR. This change and any other ones that may come up before we bring the whole thing to you, we'll make that a point of the EDR when we bring it back.
I guess the point would be, either we could wordsmith it right now to reflect kind of the final policies, or just bring it back to you when the whole thing comes together. We could point out what the changes are and you adopt it, but we could take out the final, I think, what...
Okay, well, let me get the sense of staff. Do you want us to lay this on the table for, temporarily for this meeting, let you guys look at it and maybe adopt it now and get it over with, or hold off and work on it a little bit and bring it back when... Do you want us to lay this on the table for, temporarily for this meeting, let you guys look at it and maybe adopt it now and get it over with? Or hold off and work on it a little bit and bring it back when we adopt the, the final, final document?
I think you could adopt it today. I think here it's Mr. Gunning's suggestion to take, strike "final" off and just give you some assurance that not everything is settled. We'll bring the entire comp plan back to you early next year for final adoption, so that would just make it clear to everybody. And they'll also point out where the changes have been made to reflect Mr. Williams' comments at that time.
All right, is there a motion to, on the EDR, to amend the EDR to strike the word "final"? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That amendment to the EDR is adopted. Any further discussion? Mr. Hart?
This is not with the amendment of the EDR. I, I was pleased to see the inclusion of climate change in this environmental element. What I was looking for in that discussion was really a bit more pointed objectives of assessing what the hazards that climate change may impose on the environment that we've become accustomed to, in particular, the potential rise in sea level and its effect on the shoreline and, you know, infrastructure, things like that in the shoreline. I would encourage that, you know, in the support of the analysis impacts, that there be a lot more attention given to potential future land impacts of climate change and particular sea level rise. One foot of sea level rise creates a dramatic change to the shoreline, to the areas that are subject to inundation and flood hazard. And I've heard predictions of six to 12 feet over the next century of rise. I don't know how legitimate those predictions are, but I think that, given the fact that there is a history of increasing sea level across the globe and the effects of, of climate on the polar ice caps, that some analysis be given to, you know, what is the potential impact, whether it is realistic or, you know, projected simply based on some of the, the past history, I think would be very useful. And we are a planning agency, we look to the future and we try to study the, you know, the worst-case scenarios and how to, to prevent that. So I applaud the inclusion of the climate change. I would like to see, you know, it, it become the beginning of some significant analysis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments? I had just one question for Mr. Zaden. I noticed in the public comment section, what few public comments there were, they were all concentrated on solid waste and recycling, and our general response was, "We don't have authority over solid waste and recycling," yet elsewhere in the document, we do talk about solid waste and recycling, mostly in terms of environmental justice. And then in our planning documents, we, unlike the Southwest Echo District, we get into it. So, so there's not a disconnect between the public comment and other evidence to the contrary. Can you explain in context why we don't have authority in terms of what they're asking, yet we do address solid waste and recycling?
Yeah, and maybe, maybe I didn't word it correctly in those responses, but essentially, from my understanding of the public comments, they were about the certification of recycling centers and solid waste manager centers, and the US EPA and other agencies certify those types of establishments, we don't. The policies in the comp plan are more about what federal agencies should do to manage their, their solid waste, but not so much the certification of facilities, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I was just looking for some clarification and... All right, since there are no additional questions or comments, is there a motion on adopting, as amended, the EDR on the federal, on the environmental elements? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the amended EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimously adopted. Thank you, Mr. Zaden, very much. Item 5B on the agenda is the new commissary at Fort Belvoir, and we have Mr. Will. Welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a new commissary project to be located on the north post portion of Fort Belvoir in Fairfax County, Virginia. This project is submitted by the Department of the Army for preliminary building and site development plan review. So Fort Belvoir is located approximately 12 miles south of Washington DC, just to the east of I-95. Here's a map that shows the fort and the, the project location is shown with the red circle as being on north post. And here's a close-up air photo showing the existing condition. There is the, the Post Exchange Building and the existing commissary building. And there's a, there's a larger planning effort to plan a, a north post town center, which requires the shifting of the Post Exchange Building and the, and the commissary building to the northwest. Now, the commission reviewed the Post Exchange project three different times during 2010 and 2011. The, the future Post Exchange Center is currently undergoing construction and is scheduled for opening in 2013. Once that facility is operational, the existing Post Exchange Building shown there will be demolished, and the future commissary building will be relocated on the site of the existing Post Exchange Building. So during the commission review of the Post Exchange, there were several commission concerns related to that project, in, in particular, the, the large-scale tree removal required by that project, the stormwater management plans, and also a seemingly lack of, of, of design to the proposed town center plan. This was essentially the placeholder design that was included in the environmental assessment, which was done in 2010 for that north post town center. You will note the, the proposed or the future Post Exchange as the red square and the future commissary building as the blue square. So, you know, in response to the commission concerns over the, the, the poor design of the north post town center, the Army worked with NCPC staff to refine that, that town center concept. The direction we were given due to the relatively late planning stages, relatively late in the planning process for both, both the Post Exchange Building and the commissary, as well as the financial constraints for the PX and the commissary, the direction we were given was that the, while those two pieces were essentially fixed as to their forms, the rest of the post town center was a relatively clean slate, and, and NCPC staff worked very closely with the Army to try to, to redesign that portion of the town center. So we looked at some existing examples of successful, well, relatively existing and planned town center-like developments within the region. All of these town center developments cater to both a, a regional clientele as well as a local clientele, which is similar to the north post town center. And the Army redesigned the north post town center to, to reflect a better design. They incorporated a better circulation network throughout the development. They incorporated several special nodes where some, some special placemaking attention would, would enter into their design. They really increased their mix of uses in the new town center development. In particular, they, they added some housing, which is shown in blue. They also took a step back and really made an effort to really foster more, more walking, more, more bicycling and more transit usage between the existing and planned uses directly adjacent to the new town center, in particular, south of Gorgas Road and, and the relatively large residential development located to the southeast of the development, known as Lewis Village. One of the other significant design improvements that came out of that effort was the, the design of a pedestrian promenade that was intended to entice walkers to walk between the more regional uses, the PX Center and the commissary, and the rest of the more local town, more local town center development. And I'll show you that in a few slides. So here's the actual commissary building. This shows the, the typical red brick facade that is pretty standard throughout Fort Belvoir. This appearance meets the, the installation design guidelines and is, is very, fairly similar to the PX Shopping Center. Here's a proposed floor plan for the new 140,000-square-foot commissary building. This is being designed to meet LEED Silver Certification with a cool roof primarily on the ground level, and there, there will be a 7,500-square-foot elevated mezzanine level for staff only. Here's a larger commissary site development plan. You can see the, the commissary building will be situated in between the new PX Shopping Center to the left and the rest of the, the future town center development to the right. I should note that, that the north is to the left side of the slide. In particular with, in this particular site plan, I want to draw your attention to the fact that there will be a shared, single-use parking facility for customers, intended to be shared by both the PX Center and the commissary. So the commissary, the, the customer parking for the commissary will essentially just be expanding the, the PX Center customer lot to the south. Here's a closer view of a site plan, commercial loading and vendor parking provided along the east side of the commissary, in the rear of the building, a separate employee parking lot with 66 spaces provided to the south, as well as future expansion space. And again, the, the 522 customer parking lot located along the west side of the building. Here's the pedestrian promenade four-court area that will be located directly in front of the commissary building. And again, this, this was a design improvement that came out of the, the redesign of the north post town center development effort. Here's a close-up of that pedestrian promenade, and again, this will provide a, a critical segment as part of that, that pedestrian spine that will encourage walkers between the, the, the more local uses to the south and the PX Center and the new commissary. You can see the original design to the bottom. It was primarily designed simply as a, an impervious plaza. The new design has, still consists of that decorative stamped concrete. However, there's a lot more seating included now, a lot more pervious surface through planting beds, and, and an effort was really made to try to green it up, to provide more of a park-like setting, an environment, a space where people would want to, to gather and, and congregate and, and to walk. Here's some rendering showing that, that newly designed space. This is looking north towards the PX Shopping Center with the commissary on the right. This is looking southeast, back across the space towards one of the proposed commissary entrances. And this is a stepped-back elevated view looking to the northwest. You can see the, the proposed APES PX Shopping Center building to the left and the commissary building to the right. So with that, staff reviewed the site development plan. Staff noted that, that the proposed customer lot is 80 spaces fewer than the existing customer lot for the commissary. The commissary, the proposed commissary space is approximately 8% larger than the existing commissary, and the parking that, that is provided in the current site plan does, is less than, than the amount of customer parking that would be required by Fairfax County for a, a similar-sized development. Staff also noted that, that the, that the proposed customer parking will be a part of a, a shared-use, single parking lot to try to encourage as, as, as efficient of a, a customer utilization as possible. However, staff has requested from the Army more detailed customer demand forecast information to really ensure that, that that customer lot is as, as minimal as possible. Staff also questioned the need for a fully separate employee lot, lot as well, and, and was wondering if that employee parking could also be accommodated in the, in the, the shared customer lot as proposed. Terms of stormwater management, the applicant has indicated that, that the site design will meet Fairfax County, Commonwealth of Virginia, ESA, and Chesapeake Bay Protection Act standards. However, due to the preliminary nature of the design, it has not been finalized to a point yet where you can, you can see those definitive values and, and really ensure that, that, that it will meet those design standards. Staff notes that the proposed design will utilize pervious concrete spaces, similar to the PX Shopping Center parking lot, which will help reduce the, the amount of stormwater impacts. The parking lot will utilize bio swales and other low-impact development features as much as possible. And again, staff wanted to bring to your attention the, the improved four-court area, pedestrian promenade area, which now has significantly a better design and a lot more pervious surface than, than the existing design. And it really kind of ties both the commissary and the PX Center in more successfully into the rest of the town center design.
Mr. Will?
Yes?
Further define, how much pervious concrete or pervious space is there in the great scheme of things relative to the first design and what is, you know, how much additional is there now than what was proposed?
Well, I can tell you that approximately 68% of the surface area, the parking surface area, will be pervious concrete.
Okay, that's helpful.
Compared with 0% before.
That, that's helpful, thank you.
However, staff received an incomplete information package related to the, the project's reforestation and has requested additional information from the Army on that, that, their reforestation plans for the project. And again, staff noted that due to the preliminary nature of the stormwater design, staff wanted to, to hold off on recommending approval to ensure that it, it will, in fact, meet all those various design standards. So with that is the, the executive director's recommendation to the commission to approve the preliminary building plans for the new commissary, but to defer action on the preliminary site development plans due to inadequate information on the applicant's reforestation plan, as well as proposed parking and stormwater management plan. And a request that prior to submitting for preliminary and final approval of site development plans for the commissary, the applicant should include the, should provide the following: information on the tree reforestation plan being developed for the master plan update, documentation on the project's compliance with stormwater management standards from Fairfax County, Commonwealth of Virginia, ESA, and Chesapeake Bay Protection Restoration Act, and a detailed forecast of projected customer demand for the shared parking lot. To recommend the elimination of a separate employee lot, and to note that the applicant has worked with NCPC staff on the development of a north post town center small area plan in response to previous commission comments and concerns, but that that final north post town center plan will not be available until a draft master plan is submitted to the commission for, for review in early 2013. And that concludes my presentation. I'm now available to answer any questions, and we also have Chris Landgraf here from Fort Belvoir, who can answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I have one question. If the employee parking lot is eliminated, is that to say it'll become green space, or what is anticipated if it's not?
Well, well, that, that is our hope. Our hope that by having a, a shared-use facility, that facility will have the, the, an appropriate number of parking spaces that can accommodate that, that, that employee parking as well to create a more efficient parking facility. And yes, our hope would be that, that space would be, would be green. It would be additional pervious space. And also, people wouldn't have to necessarily walk across the parking lot to, to reach the rest of the town center development.
Questions or comments for Mr. May?
On the same subject, the employee parking lot, I, I, there was a leap of logic that I missed somehow in my reading of the EDR, in that the, it is noted that the employee parking lot is larger than NCPC standards or our standards. And there was no... And there was no explanation of why that simply means the best thing to do is to eliminate it entirely. I mean, there's certainly some logical, practical reasons why one would want to have a separate employee parking lot. And having worked at a facility similar to this a million years ago, the, you know, the policy was always, well, the employees had to park farthest away so the customers could park closer. But that's not a very easy thing to enforce. So I'm wondering what the logic is of not wanting to have any kind of separate employee parking.
Well, basically, that was a recommendation based on the parking demand information that we have, which is really no information. We just want to make sure that the amount of pervious surface is as minimal as possible in light of the past history of the PX Shopping Center project. And so, you know, that was just a thought on our part that, you know, maybe that could be eliminated until proven otherwise. And so-
It was just an attempt to get rid of 66 parking spaces or whatever the number was?
Right, right, correct. And really make sure that any sort of pervious-
Because you thought there were 66 too many spaces? Because the only thing it says in the report is that there are seven too many or something like that.
Right, right. Well, I did note, correct, that the proposed employee parking did exceed that parking ratio goal in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
But, but again, in an effort to try to minimize the amount of pervious surface on-site, you know, maybe that parking, that separate parking lot could be fully eliminated and that employee parking could be accommodated, you know, within the larger shared parking facility.
I have a question.
Okay.
Excuse me. What are you finishing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How does Fort Belvoir feel about this? What was the rationale? Do we have anyone to answer that question? Or do we have a Fort Belvoir representative? I would really like to know. Before you speak, I just want to make one thing aware, all of you. Pervious surface, I'm an incredible environmentalist. I believe in what you all believe. But I'm also a structural expert. And I want to make everyone aware that pervious concrete has absolutely zero structural value. In order for it to make it work, we have to have the right base. Or if we don't have the right base for it, we have to build the right base. Otherwise, we will have severe problems. So when we talk about that the six parking spaces could not be accommodated as they are or be pervious, non-pervious, I would like to know what, how the requirements came about, how do you feel about the ratios, which I have a hard time to deal with too, when we were just building our TNP for the Pentagon? So I would like to see what led you to actually asking for those parking spaces. Could you please, any one of you, or both of you answer this question?
We originally requested the spaces based on the total employee staffing load for the largest shift. We recognize the fact that we have between 60 and 70 full-time permanent employees and then we have about 53 during the peak shift, temporary employees that come in in two-four-hour shift change over times. So the parking load was requested based on that. It was also based on the fact that during that time, we have vendors and companies that actually come in during the morning and the afternoon to restock based on heavy demand. And so what wasn't clearly submitted to the commission and to the staff, and our design team is actually looking back into it based on Michael's questions, is that we do actually need some of those parking spaces to be designated specifically for the vendor parking so that they can come in the backside of the, they're coming in smaller vehicles than tractor-trailers. So they would need spaces that are dedicated for them to be able to offload their materials, bring it into the backside, restock the shelves, and then leave again. And that actually occurs throughout the day according to the current commissary operations manager. And so we're relooking at it based on Michael's comment. I would like to point out, and I did bring this to Michael's attention just yesterday afternoon, that the reason that we had placed the employee parking on that portion of the design plan was because it also serves as a secondary use for emergency vehicle access. This is a 140,000 square feet facility, as Michael said. The front part of it is actually a two-story facility. And so we need three-side access to this facility for firefighting purposes should that ever have to occur. So we really won't be able to eliminate, even if we eliminate the parking or we minimize it to the maximum extent practicable and get it back under our standards, there will most likely have to be a drive aisle on that side that is at least 24 feet wide to accommodate a ladder truck, given the size of this facility. So we're looking at it and we do agree that we had seven parking spaces, too many listed. And we've already brought that to the design team and are prepared to deal with that question in the final submission.
And also, I just wanted to add one thing. What I told Chris on the phone is, you know, hopefully this will, this will answer Mr. May's question. But, you know, again, we just want to know if that employee lot could be separate, you know, could be fully eliminated. I think the reason why I still pointed out the fact that there were too many parking spaces based on the ratio was that if it can't be eliminated, you know, due to requirements such as Chris just said, you know, I was just noting that it was still too many employee spaces, you know, for that separate parking lot. So if the Army decides that they do need, you know, a fully separate employee lot, then they should note that, you know, based on the goal, they should have no more than 59
And we agree that we are relooking at the parking requirements and again, going to fully identify employee spaces versus flag spaces that are specifically for vendors, which would be co-located but marked so that they're not for employee parking. And then with re-answer to your question, we are actually doing the full spectrum analysis for pervious pavement with, you know, we've done some borings to determine what our infiltration rates are. We are building our pavement so that we have a suitable substructure because we don't want failure of the porous concrete.
Thank you for answering my question.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gunning? Mr. May, did you have anything else?
I don't have questions, but when we're ready to discuss-
Okay, let's finish some questions. Mr. Gunning?
I guess it's a question. I mean, you made it very clear that the PX is now under construction and is sort of not, not part of the conversation. But I will just point out, I think it's somewhat tragic that the PX and the commissary couldn't have been situated across the street from each other and created more of a town center. Now, one entire side of this development is all parking. And in general, and that's just really bad urban design in terms of getting, you know, you want two-sided retail and you could have actually had all of the same uses and all of the same parking even accommodated in a way that would have been a lot more pedestrian-friendly and frankly, made it more likely that people would walk to those destinations. So I will just say it's a tragically missed opportunity and I'm sorry that the Army decided to go ahead with this project, you know, and not, and not taken the time to consider those other ideas.
Other comments, questions?
I'm sorry, you opened up the door with the word tragic. I just have to say something about the design quality of these structures, even though we're a planning agency. And just a small suggestion, if you're going to, I note that we advised a two-story building. So there's this gesture towards the two-story building with these clear-story windows that run the length of the mezzanine for the staff offices. And even though they don't run the length of the building, just as a gesture, you might continue the fenestration just for grins. I mean, it's, I, it's just too bad. It could have been much nicer on, not just an urban design context, but just from, you know, this whole notion of retail and big stores, whether it's a commissary or a PX or whatever, you know, we came to some idea 25 years ago that big box stores equal town center somehow. And I don't, that's not the Army's fault. But that we're perpetuating that idea and calling this a town center is another, among the other tragedies here. And I, and I get on figure eight, the four-court, it's a really nice attempt to green up and make, make some, take away some of the impervious acreage on the site. But, but I would ask that you demand more of your designers because I cannot, I don't know, maybe people do hang out in front of the commissary. And, but this is, this is not going to be a place where I think you're going to spend a lot of money maintaining it all for naught unless people behave very differently on a Army base than they do in regular life. And maybe they do. But I just, it just feels like enterprise lost. Sorry, can't help myself. I'll be quiet.
Mr. May?
Okay, so since we started on this panel. I couldn't agree more with both Ms. Dragoning's comments and Ms. Rice's comments. I mean, this is just, it's, it's almost painful having to review this because of the failings on an urban design level and on architectural level. I mean, the difference between a big box shopping center and a town center is that you take one box and you turn it around and you face it to the other box. And they haven't even done that here. Is this, hm?
And it's more than that.
Well, I mean, but on the, on the most basic level. And this is not, I mean, this doesn't come close to really being a town center. It's the idea of it, I mean, it's just, but it is what it is. It's, they are very big boxes and I don't think that there's anything that we can do to change the fact that they're going to be building very big boxes. So, you know, I mean, the best we can hope for is better architecture and maybe some slightly better planning, and I'm not seeing either of them here. You know, I don't see that it grounds to, at this point, say no because I think we've been down the saying no road before and it doesn't seem to do very much, although there is some evidence that it has done something. So I guess we have to accept this as what we're going to get in this circumstance. I mean, it just, I agree wholeheartedly. This is just not very good.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the EDR as written?
Can we have order?
Please.
Given how the commission members feel about this and given how without our approval the PX went under construction, why should we approve it? Is my question.
Well, this is advisory, but we've also have made certain information requests that if we don't act on this whatsoever, we're not under any obligation to have, they're not under any obligation to bring to us. There is hope to do additional work on parking and such. I don't think it's very good not to act at all or to act in the negative.
You don't have to act to approve.
We don't have to act-
Well, yeah. I mean, I'm not sure that I agree with Mr. May that we, that we have no choice but to accept it. I mean, yeah, the universe has no choice but to accept it. It's under construction. But, but sometimes symbolism is important and bad design is bad design perpetrated by any part, any federal entity. And I find it hard to believe that if GSA were to bring a project of this design quality before the commission, even though we are a planning commission, the lines between planning and design are quite blurry sometimes. And I find it difficult to say we think that this is okay. And I'm not, I'm not just, I feel like this is Groundhog Day over and over and over again. And I don't get why we criticize and we say, please don't do this, we advise you not to do this, and then every time we say, but okay. So I'm not, I'm not inclined to vote for this. So I'm certainly not going to move it. And I probably will vote no, just because I think sometimes it matters to say, no, thank you. This is, maybe you've made some, some effort here, but it's not quite good enough.
I would add, I mean, in response to that, I would just say that there, I think there actually has been a little bit of movement and a step in the right direction. I mean, I think we're sending a fairly strong message by even having this discussion. And I think that, I would, I would hate to think that if we voted against it now, that the result would be that they would just ignore us, which is, you know, I mean, there's a, we have an official process for ignoring us, I know, but-
So-
I just, I think that if there's any progress at all and if the staff thinks that it's in our best, it's best to advance this even if with a tepid vote in favor, maybe that is the best thing to do.
So just a question?
Hang on just a second. I will say that there has been progress made in staff consultation. For example, this is being built on a previously developed site. There has been advances made in parking and stormwater. And so there has been effective consultation and progress being made between the, between the staffs. I will say that. Also, I would say that some of this is bred by not having an updated master plan, as we all know. The status of the master plan is, and again, reflecting on our meeting at DOD yesterday, to a, the Navy, the Army, and the Air Force and Military Command, all to a person understood not only why generally we want updated master plans, but they also understand that it's to their benefit process-wise to do this. So, you know, I have no doubt of their commitment to getting us the master plans, and they're working pretty diligently. On this particular master plan, I would say that, correct me if I'm misremembering, but it was supposed to be to us this fall and they're three or four months behind and perhaps first of the year. So one could argue they're only three or four months behind, which is, which is perhaps something given that it's been years of not having any at all. So those are my thoughts. Ms. Rice and then Mr. Hart?
And that's good. But it's a day late and a dollar short and it's just filling out the paperwork, really. What I'm talking about is aspirational and setting standards that aren't necessarily those that are dictated by regulatory goals, but rather because it's just the right thing to do. Right? And I think that we need to take a stand at some point and demand of one another. We may not always hit the mark, but we should be trying and we should require that of one another. And I think that matters.
I'm not disagreeing. Mr. Hart?
In addition to the master plan, a portion of that is a transportation management plan. I don't see evidence in this that they're responding to the objectives of the transportation management plan with respect to reduced parking, numbers of employees for which there is parking. I, I need a master plan that makes sense in order to be able to vote on individual projects. And while there are a lot of architectural design issues that I take exception to and I applaud a lot of the environmental steps towards, you know, improving the design, I have a basic problem with approving projects that are not in a master plan that's already approved because that is the building framework that all these pieces fall into.
Mr. Gunning?
So if part of what we want to do is to go on record signifying our disappointment, should we, should someone move to disapprove the plan? Even should that, even if that motion should not carry, that would become part of the official record? Or not? A failed motion?
I'm not certain that it wouldn't pass.
Yes, a failed motion is part of the official record.
Yes, a failed motion is part of the official record.
Although, I'm afraid if I, someone were to move that, that it might actually...
I just said...
...be approved, that, meaning that the, that the motion to disapprove might carry.
One could always reconsider the motion.
Disappointment. Is anyone willing to move either one?
I'm willing to make a motion to that effect, yes.
And I would second it.
To disapprove.
To disapprove.
The motion is always in order, and the chair entertains. But before, Mr. Wells, did you have...
In understanding the reluctance to vote against this, is there a concern of testing the jurisdictional relationship of what our action is? Or what is the ramifications? I mean, is there concern that there'll be precedent by forcing an agency to ignore us? Or, what is the concern?
I could take a hand, I could answer that. It does trigger a process. And so, in the last round with the PX, the commission actually voted to disapprove that project. And that forced, at that time, the applicant to respond, you know, in detail why they were going to do certain things. And that final approval, or the final approval step, the commission again disapproved it. And at that time, they documented why they weren't going to comply, and basically said, we're going ahead and build it. So, what it does, it does trigger a process. I do think it got their attention in some aspects with this project, but fundamentally didn't address the commission's core concerns that they had expressed at the, at that time.
So, if this motion passes, it'll trigger another, the same process again?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And so, the, the purpose of the motion is to send a message by hopefully it not passing? Because we don't want to put them through the, the process again?
There are two options here. One is not taking action at all, and basically, the, the commission has ceded its ability to make any comments regarding this project. Second is if you could take an affirmative action or a negative action, you are in fact sending comments back to the applicant expressing your concerns about this project. At least those concerns will be placed on record. So, I think in response to Ms. Wright's concerns, that would at least document your concerns, regardless of whether you like it or not. And at least you'll relay that to the applicant in terms of, you know, what those concerns are. So, I think that's the difference. One is just you're not saying anything, and the applicant is free to proceed. The second option, which is to vote on something, will at least allow you to put on record whatever comments that you may have. I do think in some respects, the comments make some difference. I do think in this case, they're basically small-level interventions, just because the Army at that, at this point in time is not able to make any significant modifications to the site plan, in terms of where the buildings are located. So, everything that you're seeing right now are essentially small-scale interventions. I would remind the commission that in, at the last meeting, they actually had proposed a plan for the other portion of this town center, which I do think is significantly better than what they had proposed, which is more of the small-scale retailing, the residential areas, or whatever, which this would tie into. So, I do think, at least the commission at that point got the message across that something had to be done overall with, with respect to this project. So, I do think there are some, you know, hopefully vast improvements in that portion of this area. But unfortunately, with respect to the PX and commissary, these are indeed just small interventions. And so, regardless of that, I think you, you do have choices here. I do hear your concerns, I do share those concerns also. But I think with respect to the staff's work, we are just trying to make sure that this project, you know, regardless of how much intervention we can conduct in this area, is, is as good as it can be. And that, I do agree that a lot of this is small scale, but I do think they will make some difference in terms of the quality of the project. And they could move, they could do more, but I think that's, that's the point. The other piece of it is, there were a lot of questions about parking and traffic and the number of spaces that they need, and I do think Mr. May made a good point. The question is whether they could consolidate it with their one facility or if they need two. This action would defer a decision on the remainder of the site plan, so at least they could come back and show you kind of a revised version of that, and whether they could accommodate these issues that you've raised or not, at least with respect to the parking and the road layouts and other portions of it that aren't, that aren't related to the building. So, that is the other thing that this recommendation would do, is to at least bring that back to the table, at least work those things through, so you won't have, so at least you won't have major traffic problems on the site.
Let's remember, this is preliminary approval for the building plan, so they still have to come back to us for the final. And it's a deferred preliminary approval of the site, site plans. So, they, they still have a way, they still have to come back before us. So, with that, the chair would entertain a motion, any motion?
We have a motion.
What was the, to dis, so it was articulated? Okay. And it was a second?
Yes.
So, the motion on the floor is to disapprove the EDR as written. Hearing no...
To disapprove the plan as submitted.
To do that, exactly as it is, except for it says approve, just like with...
To disapprove, indeed. Hearing no further discussion.
Can I just ask one, make sure I understand? So, does the staff have any changes to your proposed action based on the discussion of the commission today? Because your proposed action is to approve the building with comments and defer approval of the site. So, does that still stand as the staff reaction, or staff action, rather?
I think that could work. I think the key is, again, kind of the, at least at this point, the traffic and parking issues, at least we would like them to come back and bring that to, back to the commission, at least in terms of understanding kind of really what's going on with respect to transportation in the area, and they think these recommendations do that. I think you are making a statement with respect to the disapproval in terms of, you know, the building itself, but I think this, and the defers will at least leave the site development issues in play until we get further information on that. And we could still work through that with the applicant.
Well, make sure I understand, the, the motion is to amend the EDR to say disapprove instead of approve, then everything else is the same.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you. I understand.
So, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of amending the EDR as noted, say aye.
Aye.
You mean disapproving.
Yeah.
Yes, aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Just make sure, all in favor of a...
Of disapproving.
Disapproving. One, two, three, four, five. And those voting the other way. One, two, three, four. So, it passes five to four. I'm going to vote to, to approve.
I'm sorry, you're voting against the motion?
Against the motion.
Oh.
A motion against the motion.
Against the motion.
Then I think you need to recount.
It is five to five. It's five to five.
Fails to pass.
Fails to pass.
No, no action.
No action.
Okay.
Did the chair vote, or do you...
I did. Five to five. It's tied.
That was a motion to disapprove. Does anyone want to move a motion to approve?
I want to make it approved the way it is.
Excuse me.
Oh. I make a motion to approve it.
Ms. Dr. Glatz, you cannot vote.
Is that right? Okay, I'm sorry, but I was...
The first motion was fine.
Oh, that's right.
Because she cannot vote.
I was assigned to, to represent her today.
We have to have a letter from the Secretary of Defense saying that you are sitting for him.
I thought that was done. So, that is probably some place in email, I'm sorry.
So, it's five to four, then, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
It passes.
The motion to disapprove passed, five to four. Okay. Agenda item 6A.
Could I just make a, a point? Excuse me, sir. I, I think it's important to note that if, unless the assignment of, for the alternates includes the ability for them to vote, they can't vote. So, therefore, you who have multiple levels should make sure if another alternate is appearing, they have the authority to vote.
Agenda item 6A is an information presentation on the National Mall Design Competition, focusing on Constitution Gardens and Sylvan, and the Sylvan Theater. We have Ms. Hirsch. Welcome.
Good afternoon. The National Park Service is here with the Trust for the National Mall to provide two information presentations on two different sites on the National Mall. The first is the Sylvan Theater and the Washington Monument Grounds, and the second is for Constitution Gardens. The Trust for the National Mall, as you know, held a design competition last year for these sites, and in an effort to advance the ideas in the National Mall plan. And at this point, staff has had early consultation with the Park Service and the Trust, and essentially, the projects are just at the very early stages. And we anticipate that we would, the projects would be coming before the commission in the next year or so. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Park Service and the Trust to introduce the projects and the, the designers.
Are you looking at me? Because I didn't, I, I thought that maybe Steve Lorenzetti, did you want to say any opening remarks to kick things off before you pass it on to the, the Trust?
I didn't know you were looking at me either.
I, it's news to me, sorry.
Thank you for letting us come and present. The Trust is our partner. They are helping us with the implementation of the National Mall plan. They have run a design competition for two of our sites, Constitution Gardens, which has an east end that was never quite completed in the original SOM design, as well as a reimagining of how we should use the Sylvan Theater on the Washington Monument Grounds. We're working closely with the Trust to try to have these projects come to, at least one of them come to fruition before our centennial. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Caroline Cunningham with the Trust.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Caroline Cunningham. I'm the president of the Trust for the National Mall. And as both Peter and Steve mentioned, we held a design competition run by Don Statsny. Many of you know him. He developed the design excellence guidelines for GSA. And we ran a national competition last year, culminating in May in three designs, one for Constitution Gardens, one for Washington Monument Grounds at Sylvan Theater, and one for Union Square in front of the Capitol. Unfortunately, I, I think all of the designs are stunning. Unfortunately, Union Square was taken by Congress in December of 2011 in their omnibus, or their continuing resolution, I don't know which, which format of their budget they passed last year. The Trust for the National Mall wanted to present this information to you, and I have to tell you, we have been working as a part of the steering committee of the design competition with the District Office of Planning, the National Capitol Planning Commission, the Smithsonian, the National Gallery of Art, the Commission on Fine Arts. We wanted to make certain that all voices, while we were developing the programs for these elements, were involved in the outcomes. The jury, which I think was not only very helpful to us, but I think came together, made a unanimous decision on the final outcomes of these, each of these locations, and I think what they, they delivered to us was really quite stunning. I think all of the designs are respectful of the historic context of the park. They also restored the park in a more meaningful, sustainable way, in particular on Constitution Gardens, which never really could sustain the quality of environment, given the soil and the water systems. And we are very proud to present these to you. The purpose really of this discussion is to get your input before we start discussing alternatives. We wanted to make sure that, you know, you had at least exposure with these plans, so that you could provide us some guidance as we take the next step. And the next step is working through alternatives and getting a very good handle on costs associated with both of these projects. And at that point, we would turn it over, what we think probably in February of next year, beginning of March, over to the Park Service and our Board of Directors with a very strong understanding of costs, so they could make a determination on what project to go forward with. Then we would go through the natural alternatives process, the NEPA process, the One to Six process, and take what you will see as original concepts to final design. We anticipate that process will get us to about 2014, while we, at the same time, raise the funds for these projects, and then, as Steve said, complete one of the projects by 2016 as a gift to the nation for the 100th anniversary of the National Park Service. I am very honored by the quality of work that were done by the designers that were chosen, and I'm very grateful to the people who are here who participated on the design competition and the technical advisory group. I think that they helped us shape this project in a, in a very important and, and an outcome I think that will benefit not only the country, but the district as well.
So, I will start with Adam Greenspan. Then Constitution Gardens.
Good afternoon. I'm Adam Greenspan, a partner at PWP Landscape Architects, and we with Rogers Marvel Architecture submitted the competition scheme for Constitution Gardens. What we realized when we started our work here was that Peter Walker, who's been working in DC for 50 or 60 years, and I for 20 years, neither of us knew Constitution Gardens by name or where it was. Where it is, sorry, is, is around the Vietnam Memorial Site and over where that box is adjacent to the Mall proper. The interesting thing about it is, it's a curvilinear design, a place that's, you know, distinctly different from the rest of the Mall. It's less monumental, more natural in a sense. When we looked at the history of it, we definitely see it as curvilinear, but definitely related to modernism, a more biomorphic modernism, like the Roberto Burl Marx paintings and drawings. And we were definitely drawn to the sinuous line that made the edge and makes the edge today of the pond, the fantastic reflection that you get of the Washington Monument and anything around it. So, we were committed to maintaining these, these significant character aspects of the, the piece itself in any new design, but also, we were looking at a lot of the problems that we have there today. This is that sinuous edge today in a number of different areas, and that's really emblematic of a lot of deterioration and a lot of death and dying. Two-thirds of the trees that were planted in 1976 have died, many of those replaced once or twice over. The soils there really aren't healthy and are dying, and literally slumping into the ground. So, the form that we had in the beginning is not there anymore. The lake itself really was only aesthetic. It wasn't something that was connected to the land and to, to life. And what we believe is that this, this place, Constitution Gardens, can become a place with a really special kind of life on the Mall, different than every other place on the Mall, not monumental, a respite away from the larger scaled areas, and in some ways, the, you know, a place for smaller groups rather than crowds. What we were looking at was some of the existing trees and the way that the trees in the lower areas, the lower elevations in this gray space here, were the trees that were found to be mostly dead and dying, the reds, the oranges, the yellows in this plan versus the greens. And there were still some green and healthy blue trees, as mapped in this survey, in the upper areas, the higher elevations. And this is because the soil here was slumping, it was waterlogged, and the trees weren't able to deal in the conditions that they've been given. There's a lot of construction debris that's likely in the soil there, left from architecture that had been on the site before construction, and that was just left underneath. So, the heart of our scheme can be, you know, expressed in this section. This is Constitution Avenue over here. This is the existing lake elevation. And we're proposing enhancing the topography all around the lake, so that you get this series of rolling hills. And those rolling hills are more like the original grading plan that SOM did, that has sunk over time. But we're talking about enhancing that even more, so that you have a feeling of enclosure and a feeling, and a feeling of envelopment in this landscape. So, when you come from the bigger sp... So when you come from the bigger space of the mall, the traffic of Constitution Avenue, you come through gateways between those hills and enter into a space that will be full of life, integrated life, both or all people, plants, and animals together. So when we look at this, this is the level of the existing grade today. In the past, it was probably up a little bit higher than that. We're proposing putting in a continuous drainage layer of sand so that this entire construction drains well and lives in a healthy way in the future. One other thing that our scheme does is tries to connect the paths and the experience of Constitution Gardens to the memorials around it, the Washington, I mean, the World War II memorial as well as the Vietnam memorial, but also connecting in a more visible and more celebrated way to all of the streets coming from the north that go into the park. So even though we do have that undulating edge with the raised topography, there are points where those come down and you're able to walk in between a small, a low wall that runs around, a seat wall that gives the gardens an identity and a place for naming. We've also connected the Vietnam Memorial to an adjusted path system that flows very smoothly and effortlessly from the end of the Vietnam Memorial so that when you come out of that, you can either continue on into the gardens or you continue back to the interpretational area related to Vietnam. So what we end up having is a garden that's connected both to DC and the rest of the mall. And inside of that garden, inside of those edges, which are surrounded by the topography and a continuous wooded edge that you can see here, we have a lot of nooks and crannies, large spaces and small spaces where people, there can be events as well as smaller, less organized activities for people as they go through. This is an elevation looking south from Constitution Avenue. So you see the landform goes up and down, up and down. Each of these points down are those breaks in that low wall as well as that landform. So they offer a big welcoming entry into the gardens, but also views. Right now, this is an elevation, so you can't see it. But when you, if you were standing or in your car here, you would get a view across the lake, all the way across to the gardens and the flowering displays on the other side. Another episode that exists today in the garden is the 56 Sinners Memorial. We're maintaining that memorial on that island, but enhancing it through making a better threshold, a nicer bridge, and coming across a wetland area and through sort of a scrim of willows onto the more open island, adding magnolias to that. So this really becomes something that's set off in the seasons and that you get a different view across the lake. Some of the most interesting ideas in, we felt in the competition were putting elements within the lake that maintain its reflection and maintain the ways that it contributes today, but also expand either its health and the way that it's integrated with the rest of the garden and ecology or social activity. So one of those ideas is the water ring. It's something that exists at the far eastern end of the lake and is about the size of a hockey rink. This is a space that we think can be drained and turned into an ice skating rink, something that feels more like you're skating on a frozen pond than skating in an urban setting on a plaza or something like that. In the summer, if you drain it only slightly, it reveals a path and a walkway that runs around that slightly lower space in the center. So that becomes a venue for model boating, like in Central Park or in Paris, and fishing on National Fishing Day is something that already takes place there every year. But this will be a new way to experience and get into the lake. So that lake is part of an integrated water system that we've really designed the whole gardens around. We're hoping to collect rain runoff and urban runoff from the buildings across Constitution Avenue as well as our building, a pavilion building that Rob will talk about momentarily. We're also looking at containing and collecting all of the surface runoff and the sub drainage into the lake so that that becomes then the generator of irrigation water and the place where that water can be filtered and then recycled. The existing work that's being done that connects the reflecting pool to the tidal basin is something we also looked at continuing and connecting so that the lake can be flushed periodically or topped off with tidal basin water as needed. So this represents an integrated topography of the wooded edge at the highest levels with open lawns that are flexible and can be used in different ways by people. And then upland and lowland gardens, a wetland shelf at the bottom, where water that moves through this is being filtered as it comes down, going into the ground, and then transported also in the subterranean sand layer. And then the pond itself is made much deeper so that it can be maintained in a healthy condition and planted heavily around the edge so that it, something, you know, more interesting to look at, but also something that gets filtered by those plants. So today, this is the view that we're having. And while this is a legacy and represents a couple of the aspects that we wanted to maintain over time, it also shows some of the problems. And we're looking at the things that are liabilities today, like the contaminated soil, as being something that becomes an integrated part or an integral part of our construction. So the landforms that we're talking about can be made from the harvested contaminated soil on site so that this can be done in a rather incremental way around the lake or around the site where both trees and soil are harvested and moved. The healthiest trees we're proposing do get salvaged and become part of the woods that runs around the park. Whereas, single trees that are specimen quality could be used as individual trees in open lawn areas. So when you see this diagram here, this color represents the woods, a sort of composed woodland that's made in part of the trees that we would harvest from the site but aren't of specimen quality but are in good health. Larger trees and then the wetland shelf and the lower plantings. So these are some images of the character of the spaces that we'll be developing. And this shows really their distribution around the site. So we'll have upland and lowland gardens with different pallets, a wetland shelf, and a wood with understory underneath it, separating the maintenance needs of the different kinds of landscapes. So the Park Service can maintain lawns and lawns only, maintain trees with ground cover under them in a different way. Even though we'll have these different types of landscapes and types of expression in the garden, one thing that we tried to focus on was the simplicity and the boldness of the original design. So as we have a pallet in each of these gardens of different plants to make something that has interest and shows itself over the seasons, each season should express itself clearly, you know, as one or two colors. And we're organizing that by looking at different heights on the plants that bloom at different times of the year. So within that plan, we have an opportunity for a lot of different events. One space I didn't talk about is a large outdoor amphitheater as well as the pavilion that we have at the far eastern edge of the site. Those two spaces are the most highly programmed spaces in the garden and the places that we can bring lots of people for organized events. The building itself will be the hub for all of that activity that I just talked about. So we've looked at, instead of having a number of pavilions throughout this, about 20 acres, we're looking at having one place and one building that fits out and is able to serve all of the activities that we have. This is an image of the amphitheater and looking east, the pavilion. This amphitheater can range from about 100 people or a few people up to 1,000. This is at the far western end. The Vietnam Memorial is further to the left here. And the topography all around the pond quiets the sound of whatever goes on inside. We've had studies done so different kinds of events or kinds of celebrations can happen in the garden and not impose themselves on the other activities adjacent to the garden. And lastly, this is an image looking at what we envisioned for nighttime here. We use the historical lamp, but I think using lighting to both highlight the design that we have and also make it a safer and more usable place through much of the day is something that we're really aiming to do, both through the day and through the year.
Thank you. Rob Rogers, Rogers Marvel Architects. As we were working with Adam and Pete in their office, thinking about the building configuration for the site, which as Adam mentioned, is really about supporting the incredible programmatic opportunities of the rebuilt garden. We also looked at the legacy of the SOM and the Dan Kylie Plan and began to imagine how those guide us today in terms of not just the reconstruction of the landscape, but the position and proposition for a building in that site. And one of the obvious things is to say that we really felt, just as the hills and the low wall have begun the redefinition of Constitution Gardens, this building as a pavilion, as a proposition, has to be a building that belongs to the garden. It's not a memorial, it's not a monument, it's not of the scale of the mall as a whole. It's really particular to the garden. So it's kept low and it's within the canopy trees of Constitution Gardens. When we looked at the original site, the SOM building was originally intended at the top of what is now a series of step terraces going down to the lake. And we felt that that, at the time, may have been the right place. But since then, the World War II memorial has been constructed. And the formal axis exists now north and south from that axis. And we really felt that that cannot be disrupted by a building in the current configuration. So we pushed the idea of the building to the west, as indicated by the large red arrow, and thought of it as a very simple pavilion. So now, instead of coming up the terrace steps to arrive at a building, we actually pushed the building and steps together and begin to imagine it as a pavilion looking out over the lake. But the pavilion then is also a threshold moment to enter Constitution Gardens and announce that special place. And we started with a very simple rectilinear piece and just widened it and opened it up so it will favor the big, long landscape panoramic view looking out across the lake and the gardens. It's also, as Adam mentioned, when you're moving through Constitution Gardens, it's a very spirited, curved linear lyrical kind of walk as you move in and out of the lake, especially now augmented by those gardens. And we felt that the shape needed to have a perspective component so that it would dynamically change as you move around it throughout the garden experience. We also, after building this area up to meet all the current criteria to integrate with the work of the Army Corps and establishing the levee heights, so this is the transit height correct to get across and then down into the World War II memorial, that we actually sloped slightly up, lifting the pavilion as it sort of ramps up so that you've really got a porch and a prospect looking out over the new gardens. But it also gives us adequate space underneath for what will become an area of the concessions, restrooms, and classic park amenities, ice skating rental, boat rental, kite rental, things like that, opportunities. So we've also proposed a plaza-type space on the east side of the pavilion so that we've got a place for school groups and interpretation, education, and gathering as people move to and from the memorials, and a place that actually the pavilion can expand. So I'm going to walk you through the pavilion now as sort of threshold and gateway to the gardens as you move down those large generous stairs. Great place for impromptu activities and events down to the lake level with the concessions, restrooms, park facilities just to your left in this image. So the building is really split. There's the big grand stair that takes you down to the lake level, the concessions, restroom, bathrooms on the lower level. We've incorporated very substantial service areas, which will be accessed by an independent roadway so we can actually get the kind of service we need to really deliver food, pick up trash, manage some of the parks' maintenance relationships. On the upper level, you've got the very light ramp, only about 3% up to the prospect and the porch that looks out over the lake, and then a proposed restaurant and café whose service area is below. We've proposed initially a diagrammed structural system that will span across, creating a lattice that gives us the opportunity of both transparency and closed areas where we want conditioned space and where we want open space. The pavilion is really the heart of the programming that will enable Constitution Gardens to become viable 365 days a year. And we're interested not just in the tourist who needs a moment to stop and rest, but the resident, the worker, or in DC all the time, that this is a place that they can also come in and enjoy the mall in a park-like setting. And at the corner of Constitution and 17th, we've proposed the modest relocation of the Lock Keepers House, which will become an interpretive center for the Constitution Gardens in the mall. And you can see the building is visible through the trees, but is not a major presence from that side. We believe this is a place for these kind of moments of respite and recreation and refreshment along the mall. Looking forward to this being something that becomes part of the life of the city throughout the year. Thank you very much.
Is the key up?
I'm going to have to go.
Okay.
But this is very exciting. The restaurant can be a real restaurant, not one of the typical Park Service concessions.
You retire, you're going to need someone at white tables. Oh, is it, Rob?
We can either take, I mean, we were going to do both presentations and then take questions and comments, or...
I'm just wondering, because if you're going to have to go back to images that you might be oddly kind of toggling back and forth between presentations.
Sure.
We can leave an image.
Yeah.
So you'd like to take questions now?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, please.
So I like it. I think it's really beautiful. My only question has to do with the topography changes and the woodland areas. How deep and how visually impenetrable are those areas? So my question is, what is the visibility, mostly for safety reasons, from the exterior of Constitution Gardens through the woodland features?
And I think that's something that, you know, we're concerned about definitely also. And the idea there is that, I don't think we have to go to it, is that there will be a composed woodland with lower ground cover in there. So there may be a number of trunks coming down, but the goal of having mature trees limbed up, no limbs branching below eight feet, you know, on these trees, and a lower ground cover. The topography, you know, goes up a few feet, but these are large landforms. So it's not a berm that's, you know, discreet and singular where somebody could hide behind it. It's more like a hill, you know? So what you'll be seeing will be these moments where you see from Constitution Avenue up to the peak of that hill. And as you move through that space, you'll get an expanded view of the other side as you move around. You won't see on the other side of the hill, but you will see oblique views. And like I showed on the long elevation, we do have this undulating change. So it's not an abrupt or sharp, you know, bump where you can spend time on one side or the other. It's something that's a slow grade going down and slowly coming up again as you move through. So this will be closer to the scale of the areas around the Washington Monument today, actually, in some spaces, those larger landforms. actually, in some spaces, those larger landforms, rather than smaller berms, as you might think of it.
Okay, but basically, if you're on Constitution Avenue, you really can't see any activity happening around Constitution Gardens except for those pathways that punctuate, right? And what's the distance between those roughly?
This is about, I'm sorry.
This...
So you're asking what's the distance here?
No, I'm asking the distance, so if the distance of the landform between the separations, like is it as big as a city block? Is it half a block? Is it 200 feet?
It's, right now, today, there's a very small opening or a small pathway coming across the street. This is about the width of the entire street, so it's probably about 50 feet wide to 70 feet wide that we're at the flat opening in between, and then it begins to roll up on either side.
Okay, so I'm not asking about the width of the opening, I'm asking the width of the area that because of the landform and the trees, you cannot see inside Constitution Gardens. So how big is that area in between the openings?
Oh, okay. It wouldn't be that you can't see inside, and we'll have to, what we can do as we move forward is look at three-dimensional topo models, but that is a block, that width there. And so this is roughly a block or two-thirds of a block. But as you're moving down, you will get views into this space through here because this slopes down and in here, we're at a low point. So you'll be getting views through. It won't be as separate, completely separate.
I know, but what you're saying to me, though, and I think it is very beautiful, but you're going to walk the length of an entire block before you can look into Constitution Gardens again? And that while you're in the opening, you'll be able to have a panorama, but when you're not standing in front of the opening or next to the opening, you're walking an entire block when you don't have a sense of what the activity is inside?
The, you will be seeing these windows obliquely as you move down, but yes, there will be about a block where you're not getting a view across the way.
I would just express some concerns, both about safety and about what kind of experience that creates for the pedestrian on Constitution Avenue, somewhat a deadening experience for the pedestrian, that there might be wonderful activity happening, but you're not really going to be able to be aware of it because all you're seeing is the rise of the landform and then trees, which, and no human activity, basically.
I think that's something we have to definitely take into account and will look at. And I think we'll want to make it so that you can see in a little bit more frequently than that.
Going to your building, I'm sure you have it there and I just didn't see it in the plan. I'm curious.
Your microphone.
Sorry. Going back to your building.
Yes.
I'm sure you have it in the plan and I just didn't see it, but the ADA accessibility and how folks in wheelchairs would get from one level to the other.
It is there, and I'll take you there in one moment.
Right.
You, the terrace is really over this area of service below, and then it's the very modest slope up to this porch. And there's an elevator right here that goes both up and down, so that if you come at the lower level, you can ascend right there and have that porch experience, or if you're coming here, you can move up here and take that down as well.
Thank you.
There's also, and I'd have to go back to the plans, but there are pathways that make, bad analogy, but elephant ears, if you will, on either side of the building that are come down at very modest, non-railing slopes, so they connect directly that sort of concentration, refreshment concession areas to the plaza on the top.
So there's still an outdoor alternative?
That's correct.
That's great. Thank you.
On both the north and south sides.
I think that what we've been shown is very exciting, and I look forward to, you know, more refinement of the pavilion. I think that almost anything you could do to the gardens would be an improvement. But I'm excited about the kinds of landscaping that were described, the use of marsh and flowers in an area that is, right now, not real exciting. I'm not so troubled by the, you know, insertion of berms between the points of entry into the park. And I like the fact there will be this topographic difference introduced into the mall where it's basically a very flat landscape, as it is now. And I think you're building on the SOM plan in a way that will be very nice. Thank you.
Can you take us to the, hmm, I guess it's the west elevation of the building? And the reason I ask, I think it's beautiful, and I shouldn't say this, but I will. It reminds me of the ICA in Boston, and one of the problems with the ICA is the back of it. It turns its back on the city and it's beautiful on the harbor, but the, so I'm, I guess, I was wrong, the eastern. I'm directionally challenged. The eastern facade.
The right-hand side.
The one facing the Washington Monument, that one. What would be the back of this building?
I don't think the building has a back.
Okay, well, then I need to look at it more carefully. I mean, it sort of feels like a back, doesn't it?
I think it's, you know, the building is really, it's a threshold.
It's an open air.
Yeah, and it's, right now, it's very much...
A theater-y sort of thing.
It's hard to even call it a building because it's still a bit of an idea at this stage, but it's that place that is both containment and threshold.
So there's no wall here at all?
There's an enclosure, glass enclosure of the restaurant and café.
Okay.
And then the diagrammied actually comes down like a lattice work and trellis work.
Right.
And we imagine that this is as, is very transparent and porous, and this is obviously conditioned and enclosed space.
So it's not turning its back on anything? Well, that's great.
You should be able to sit here and have a beautiful view of the Washington Monument with a Cabernet or Chardonnay.
And we'll know the difference, standing here. What, where's the, where is, where are your mechanical systems?
The...
North side, or where are you going to hide all these things?
We do, there's, I look at this plan.
Yeah, okay, that's my thought.
We've got the stairway, the service elements, service elevator, small accessible bathrooms specific to the restaurant, because the large bathrooms are downstairs through the public entryway and elevator. And this is also the service core that goes down to the lower level, which has got the public bathrooms here.
Right, okay.
This is all the kitchen, service, park service area in the back. And we're, we are looking that we would have potential vehicular access actually pass through here for the Zamboni.
Oh, oh, the Zamboni, of course. Okay, thank you. I think it's wonderful. I was telling John that when I was in college at GW, we used to go down there all the time, but nobody knew it was called Constitution Gardens. And believe it or not, this was the '80s, and even then, it was long in the tooth. So I hope you're thinking really hard about the surfaces, because I remember even then, when it must have been only seven or eight years old, spalling and it was falling apart from the beginning. So I can't remember what the surfaces are, but I'm assuming you're going to use something different.
Right. And that, I mean, they were, it was a lot of asphalt and a lot of chip seal thing, and then holes in those for trees and things like that. And all of this, the materials, the methods, and the integrated design that we're looking at are both about making a system that works today, but something that'll be maintainable and long-lasting.
And in that, to that vein, we're just beginning to test some material ideas, but one of the things we've really talked about a lot is, in fact, if not the direct reuse of the stone that is in the terraces now, very similar kind of stone that makes this base level so that we keep the recall of that threshold series of terraces that are there from the SOM plan now.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's another part of the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yep. Sylvan.
Thank you very much, and I'm Marian Weiss from Weisman Freddie. This is Hallie Boyce from Olin, and...
Partner at Olin.
We're very thrilled to be selected to design the Washington Monument grounds at the Sylvan Theater in honor to present today. What is very interesting is that as we were learning about the history of the Sylvan Theater, we thought that it was interesting to think that the mall is our nation's central stage, just to begin with. And when Alice Pike Barney in 1916 conceived of and in 1917 realized the Sylvan Theater as the first venue for cultural performing events on the mall, that that was an extraordinary change and a real gift. The site, as it stands, though, today, is something that we might not know is really at the, almost at the heart of the crisscross of the two axes of the mall and then the White House and the Jefferson. So that propitious location has taken a beating, just as many others have. And so the possibility of looking at this site with such care and focus is one that really allows us to see that where the question mark is, is this strange phenomena where the audience is on the mound and the performers are across the pathway on the other side. And similarly, they're looking towards the buses now as well as the theater. So the audience turns its back to the monument, which we think is really something that seems quite strange. And those who are now arriving by buses on Independence Avenue have a flurry of pathways that are still unclear about the invitation to arrive at the mall or the theater. So for us, there were fundamental things that caught our mind, and one was that we wanted to return the theater now to this site so that the amphitheater and the audience would face the monument, and people, when they were looking at performers, could also see the monument, but that we might also recognize its connection to the monument grounds to the south with the Title Basin and see this as not an edge, but a center. And so the first idea was to include the Washington Monument in all the scales of performance. And by lifting the landscape, what we were able to do was to create a theater for about 1,000 and then offer another benefit, which was to take this new topography and capture some of the park services, offices, and park ranger station, but more importantly, conceal the buses, because that's the fundamental view that people have from the monument. The other thing, though, that caught our mind was that the Sylvan Theater had a name, but no identity of Sylvan within this site. And Shakespeare's idea of the forest really captured our imagination to offer both shade and shelter and identity, and then ultimately also think of a connection simultaneously. So our vision was really to think of this as something that is an enhancement of the landscape and landform and a there-there with shade, shelter, and performance, and potentially future connections to the south. This setting there, and with some apologies to the lightness of the plan, shows that there's a Sylvan Pavilion that is a hinge between Fifteenth and Independence, two plazas north and south, and an unfolding path landscape that allows us to now look, for instance, to our left is the Sylvan Theater, we're looking across at all the buses. But if we have a performance, we can imagine that the topography might actually change the perspective to one of a hillside, but studiously pull those topography down and pull the trees apart to open up and keep the views clear towards the Jefferson Memorial and offer gateways now with the Sylvan Pavilion to the left and the amphitheater again with those views exposed. But the question is that this is not just a place for performance, but it's a place of respite, a place to be day-to-day, a place that should be accessible at all times for wheelchairs as well, and flexible, so that if one is imagining a place of performance for about 10,000, leveraging all the sides of the mound and the new amphitheater, that we could also understand that this is reframing an historic gateway. And looking now, as if we're coming from the metro, we see Monument Lodge, which is a real gift, but to our left, we, you can also see that there's no sense of front doors or gateway. So this is about offering several gateways, including this one here, that says that where the Sylvan Pavilion opens up, keeps itself down as part of the landscape and opens up views to the monument. And similarly, now on Independence Avenue, where the buses are all lined up, that there really should be a sense of arrival at the mall instead of this confusion. And that this, to the left, you could see where the park's service offices are, restrooms for, high number of restrooms and exhibition give you your bearings. And on the right, the Sylvan Pavilion, which is really a complimentary landform with a green roof, is to your right. And that, the other side, then, is the other face where the Sylvan Café opens out onto the terrace, and you could see that in many ways, this is really as much a landscape as it is a theater. And it's one, though, that the intersection between what is architecture and what is landscape is also connected through sections so that small performances inside and even to the edge can take on a new life, so that even the Sylvan identity that we see dappled light through the trees could also give configuration and shape and identity what the interior of this pavilion might be like. And so if we look at these all together, this really is a kind of fully connected and rejuvenated landscape with new identities and landscape layer that Hallie will describe.
And like Olin's design for the composition at the base of the Washington Monument that you see in the plan on the left, we really began our design exercise with this idea of creating landform, sculpting the land to make place, as well as using tree plantings in particular to frame a new venue here, a green respite on the mall that would allow for the critical visitor amenities badly needed at its heart. The plantings reinforced the sculpting of the land of the amphitheater, providing a shady respite. And we worked to maintain a lot of the existing trees that are somewhat mature on the west side to, in order to create a new setting for the survey lodges right here and further embellish those plantings. While we sculpted the ground plane, we also kept the sculpting minimal in this area to protect those trees, but to also tuck back under the landform some of the necessary parking that's required as part of the current program, which we'll be reviewing further with the Trust and the National Park Service as we begin the design phases. But this was, looked at at the larger context, preserving the overall structure of the mall. The light green shows the very ordered plantings of the mall, the Elms, the Bows, the alleys along the streets. The light pink, which I think is very light at the moment, let me see if I can highlight this for you, the cherry trees that we all know, excuse me, are around the Title Basin along here. Olin also proposed cherry trees that would frame the Washington Monument site as well. It's this dark green plantings, the more random plantings, like those referred to by Adam at Constitution Gardens, which really lent this idea of the Sylvan Grove a wilder place on the mall, if you will. So our proposal works to rework the ground plane, to use lawn minimally, and to propose conservation areas in the lighter tan, much like that of Hyde Park in London. These are meadow landscapes using native grasses, which infiltrate water better, which attract wildlife and create an easier time for the National Park Service with regards to maintenance. It minimizes maintenance considerably. At the same time, we wanted to propose tree plantings that would not only attract the wildlife, but would also have seasonal interest in proposing fall color in particular around the monument and the green amphitheater. These are the variety of species that would, one would find here, and we think this gives the Park Service additional opportunities to educate the public, the million of children, millions of children that come here as well, about our environment and the need to make homes for these creatures. And this is the view back to the Lincoln Memorial. This place, while it accommodates all the structured events... This place, while it accommodates all the structured events that Marian talked about, can also be used, a place just to take in the view, to have a lunch or meet with a colleague and simply play. At the same time, the design keeps this place, that's so important at the heart of the mall, very open to allow for a range of programs and a range of activities, the celebrations, the demonstrations, as well as the recreation that occurs here on a daily basis. But we know it needs to be a resilient landscape, and we are talking about the surfacing. The project on the east end of the mall that's moving forward is very exciting, this need to create even the lawn spaces which can endure these flows of people, whether large or small. The design allows for circulation to occur even during an event from east to west and maintains that path just to the south of the mound at the Washington Monument. We have considered the access, as Marian stated, where buses will land on 15th as well as Independence Avenue to the south, and how maintenance will occur on site, and we'll be talking further with the National Park Service along those lines. With regards to accessibility, the majority of the amphitheater will be accessible, and our gesture of this pedestrian bridge that connects over Independence Avenue, the aspiration there is that that would also be completely ADA. It's currently, we determined that we could keep that 5% or less. We talked about preserving, conserving, and extending this landscape to the west, creating a new setting for the survey lodge. This is what it looks like today. Today, there are rangers there who are very helpful to the public, so we'd like to keep that aspect, but also this idea of creating volunteer programs where the National Park Service Rangers become the experts and might take teams of people around the site to help take care of the site or help with some of the programs there. We think it would really help connect the mall to the local community in an engaging way. And this just shows some of those ideas about the survey lodge, immediate environment, some smaller scale, sort of working landscapes, if you will. So there was really a need to invent anew here, but to pick up on the existing Washington Monument mound and landform at the same time, to enrich it with several layers of planting and create an exciting place for people to rest and refresh. We wanted to also make larger connections to the Title Basin and beyond. We looked and understood that there's the memorial loop, which is very interesting because it connects currently both the Constitution Gardens site as well as our site and the Title Basin. It's all within a five-minute walk, the Title Basin is. We also considered the various users of this site, whether it be families, the large flows of school groups via those buses on Independence Avenue. We know there's quite a running community here in DC, particularly around the Title Basin, trying to pick up on the DC Bike Share program, which is so successful and growing, allow for ease of connections to the World War II and Vietnam Memorial, and then also think of ease of access for those of senior years, as well as the advent of the new Segway, a new way to get around town. We also thought about, in the southern portion, the image on the left, in the late 19th century, this area was a working landscape. There were plots and greenhouses that allowed for the refurbishment of the mall and its gardens, particularly some of Downing's ideas, A.J. Downing, and we thought there might be a potential in the future to bring that idea back in some way. But more immediately, this idea of making this a landscape of performance, of only putting lawn where the high-traffic areas are required, and then planting the rest with this mixed meadow, really making it both ease of maintenance, but also much more sustainable for long-term use. We did also, in the competition, look at a phased approach, and we'll be talking further with the Trust and the National Park Service about those ideas.
So finally, as Hallie's talked about, a high-performance landscape, we could say that the performance should also have new highs. So to close, it's really taking that historic idea that could take something as delicate as this performance or as robust as this one, and think about what it might mean here to host roughly the Sylvan Stage today, to host 1,000 people with this reoriented stage with incredible vistas, to take this scalable landscape so that 100, 1,000, or 10,000 could work in this place more intimately for performances, it could be indoors or indoors and outdoors, or expandable venue when something extraordinary is going on. Of course, the most important thing is that when you have a theater, you've got to support it and you need to service it. So the idea is small performances are serviced in this particular route, in the Monument Plaza area, and then larger performances with their trucks and the stage elevated just to the size of those box trucks allows that to be serviced as well. But most importantly, that when you have a stage in the center, it needs to be flexible and not too heavy of a structure so that it has a matrix or literally a scaffold beginning that could sustain, say, a trellis restaurant during the day, but you could see all these diagrams on the right, all the way up to being removed and having all the rigging come in by another performance artist, so that you can see on the playbill on the right, on the left, you see small, medium, film, and large, all being able to be accommodated in this one setting that we hope will, in fact, incite the new Sylvan magic, which we would imagine would induce new horizons. Thank you.
It's very exciting. Questions or comments for Sylvan Theater? Mr. Hart?
I think you've shown us some very exciting ideas, and, you know, look forward to further refinement of them. There is a component that I do have some reservations about, and that's this pedestrian bridge. I hesitate to get too warm on something that divorces pedestrians from the landscape itself by, you know, taking them over the road and for a long distance, you know, separating them from the ground plane. There are places where that makes sense, but I'm not sure that this is it. So as you go farther, you know, please think about, you know, what that is in the landscape and in the streetscape that we're putting together. Thank you.
Ms. White?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments and thank, first, the Park Service and the Trust for the vision and the leadership that you brought to this and the design competition alone, but I was really struck by the power of your partnership in really elevating the thinking and what could be done, and I really compliment the design teams for the grace and the thoughtfulness that you've taken in your approach, and it's very clear you've thought a lot about sustainability and stewardship in the way you've approached these spaces, and I just think it's breathtaking, and I know there are a lot of details that, you know, you'll be working out and so forth, but I really appreciate coming here this early on because it's really an inspiring vision, so I really wanted to commend you all for that, so thank you.
Ms. White, any other questions or comments? Ms. Koning?
I will just say, this is mostly to Carolyn, that this is wonderful. We were delighted to be able to participate in the, you know, in the selection, and they are both designs, I think, very inspiring. I think we, you know, we look forward to seeing them again. We have some ideas about how they might change and some concerns, but to say that they're enormous improvements over the current conditions is, you know, is a vast understatement, and that they really are, you know, both very imaginative, beautiful spaces that would be, that they'd be jewels in the crown of any city, and we will be very lucky to realize them here in Washington, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very exciting. We'll look forward to having you back.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
And I was going to refer to Harriet, because I was sure she was going to ask about where the buses go. But where do the buses go in your, I mean?
The buses? Yes, Carolyn?
Where do the buses go?
Steve?
I don't think we've got there yet.
I might want to ask Harriet.
To be honest, the Park Service has not really weighed in on this plan yet. We're working out a few details so we can weigh in. We want to make sure we respect the NEPA process and the 106 process, but buses are certainly something we'll be looking at when we get an opportunity to come.
Where did you imagine the buses were going to go?
Like those ferries.
The buses are still there. They're right there.
Right, the buses are still there on Independence, but they're now screened by the new topography of the amphitheater, so in some ways, we actually like the reciprocity of the elevation, still allowing the buses to be there, and actually now with the Monument Plaza, that we, the Sylvan Plaza, they have a gateway now, as opposed to this strange condition that they have right now to arrive.
I would also say that Bob Vogel has assured me that he's finding a location to stick the buses, so I mean, I don't know that they were, that they're a part necessarily of the design. Clearly, I love that they disappear in the Washington Monument grounds' topography change, but I honestly think that, you know, figuring out where the buses go is a city slash Park Service question.
Agree. But, I mean, but, but you're designing with the idea that the buses don't go away, right?
Right, the idea is that the reciprocity between the high tourism at that location and this landscape might work together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very exciting plans. We look forward to having you back. Noting that there's nothing else to come before us, that I sense, we are adjourned.